Well, the Board of Selectmen made all the decisions and you only could vote them out every three years. Then because it's staggered, you change one, you only change twenty-five, twenty percent. You just, you know what I mean? What do you got, man?
No, nothing.
Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, June 6th, Board of Selectmen meeting. Everybody rise in Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance. Just a shout out to everybody. Don't forget, June 6th is D-Day. I think they teach that too often.
It's today. Today is the sixth.
Today is the fifth.
Can we?
Today is the fifth.
Mr. Chairman, point of order? Can we pause for a moment and we get the Zoom up?
What's that?
Could you pause the meeting for a moment while we get the Zoom up?
Sure.
Thank you. Talk amongst yourselves. Are we gonna go to that? Are we gonna go to that? Are we gonna go to that? Oh, you are.
Yeah, we're pausing for a couple minutes till we get the.
Nice one. Doesn't tell what he has to know.
Okay, we should be all set. Thank you. Public comment, we didn't have anybody. Approve the warrants. Jason, do you have those?
Yes. I'm making a motion to approve payroll warrant 2251. In the amount of $174,149, uh, $104.92.
A motion and a second. I just got a question. I have it here at 2249. What is it, 22?
Fifty-one.
Okay, and the bill warrant's the same? Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Opposed? I'm sorry. Unanimous. Thank you. Bill warrant.
I'll make a motion to approve bill warrant 2251 in the amount of $1,636,147.11, which breaks down to the town, $241,148.78. Water and sewer, $31,313.60. Payroll withholding, $83,383.56. Light bills, $250,669.71. Grants and revolving, $11,879.09. Penn Tucket Assessment, $1,017,752.37.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Approve the minutes, May 9th, 2022, meeting minutes.
I make a motion to approve the May 9th, 2022 meeting minutes. I've reviewed them.
I second that.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? Yes, go ahead, Dan.
May 9th?
May 9th.
He took a minute.
Town administrator? That was our town meeting, right?
No, May 9th with Kathryn Adrian.
Oh, sorry. Oh, your regular.
Did you do a mistake?
Yep.
Well, I looked at what.
My thought.
I looked at what Selectman Catherine Ellis commented on, and then I look at what I commented on for an explanation. And it seems like what I said was edited. So I'd like the person that took the minutes to go back and put in what I actually said.
Okay.
I felt the minutes were accurate. I read through them.
It, Dan's looking for a correction. There's only one sentence of what you said, you don't hear, Dan.
I can explain it. I mean, if you look, it says Kathy Catherine Ellis commented that it was clear it was a setup. And I rebutted that. It wasn't a setup, okay? There were reasons for it. And, and that was omitted from these minutes, okay? So it's important for the people to know why I made my decision. And that is not clear to me what was written down here.
Okay. Is there a motion to table that we did correct it?
Motion to table, Mr. Chair.
Okay, the motion to table, a second.
A second.
Motion and a second to table. There's no discussion on the motion to table. All in favor, tabling? Unanimous. We'll bring that up at the next meeting. Thank you for pointing that out. Meeting agenda, Monday, May 23rd, 2022.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for May 23rd, 2022.
I second that.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor?
Abstain.
Unanimous.
Abstention, Mr. Chair.
One abstention. He wasn't at the meeting.
What's that?
Abstention.
Selectman McDonough was not at that meeting.
Oh, he wasn't, all right. There's four in favor, one abstained. Appointment. Appointment of William Dunn, 10 Garrison Street, to the Water and Sewer Commission through May 6th, 2023. An elected position. This is an unfilled seat until the next annual election. Or a motion?
Make a motion to appoint Bill Dunn to the position of the Water and Sewer Commissioner to fill the one-year vacancy until the next town election cycle.
A second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Bill Dunn here. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you for stepping up. Appointment of Christopher Goodwin, 5 Hillview Drive, Groveland, to the Planning Board, Associate Member. An elected board, Associate Member, is appointed annually. Chris, is Chris here? Can you come up to the podium and anybody got any questions? You want to just go over some of your qualifications?
Oh, excuse me. I've just been resident of town for a few years. I'm currently Chairman of the Zone, Zoning Board, and just looking to get a little more involved with the town. And talking with Rebecca, there was an opening. And I'm just willing to step up and volunteer a little more time.
Well, thank you for stepping up. Anybody got any questions for Chris? None. I guess you must have summed it up pretty good. Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve Chris Goodwin to, as an alternate to the Planning Board. Is that for one year? For one-year period.
In a second.
A second.
Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you for stepping up and helping out. Appointment of Meadow Stokes, 92 7-Star Road, to the Finance Board through June 30th, 2023. One-year appointment under General Bylaw Section 2-35A. Is Meadow here? No. Or a motion?
Yes, I make a motion to appoint Meadow Stokes to the Finance Committee. Well, it's the Finance Board, I believe.
And there's the motion, there's a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Again, thank you, Meadow. Appointment of Alexander Woods.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
If it please, the Chairman, could we do the recommendation for Kerry Goodwin? Who is related to Chris Goodwin, so that they can.
Bring him up to it.
I know, but.
Appointment of Alexander Woods, 652 Salem Street, Groveland, to the Finance Board through June 30th, 2023. One-year appointment. Is Alexander Woods here? No. There a motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion to appoint Alexander Woods to the, um, he's going to the Finance Board, right? I read his resume. Yes, impressive resume. Glad to welcome him aboard.
A motion and a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Appointment of Steve Baker, Sunset Circle, to the Recreation Committee through June 30th, 2024. An annual appointment, is Steve here? No. Is there a motion?
I make a motion to appoint Steve Goodwin to the Recreation Committee. You said 2024. Are we going for one year or two years here?
That was my error.
Okay, it's one year. Okay, so for one year until 2023.
Just to clarify, did you say Steve Goodwin or Steve Baker?
Oh, Steve Baker, I'm sorry. I mixed the names up. Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
It's called one of those mix-up days.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Motion and a second. Steve Baker through June 30th, 2023. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Appointment of Kerry Goodwin, 5 Hillview Drive, Groveland, to the Recreation Committee through June 30th. That should probably be 2023 also.
Yes. So I'll make a motion to appoint Kerry Goodwin to the Recreation Committee through June 30th, 2023.
Kerry here?
Yes.
Well, let's see if we got any questions for you first. You can sit there till we, don't get up yet. Anybody got any questions for Kerry? No? No. I do, but it'll take too long, so we'll suspend that. There was a motion and a second. Further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Congratulations, and, and thank you for stepping up. Both you and your husband. Now, votes of the Board. One-day liquor license for a wedding reception at Beezy Park on June 11th, 2022, between the hours of 4:30 and PM and 8:30 PM. Detail officer required. And we have the paperwork on that. And it looks like all the paperwork's been filed properly. Somebody want to make a motion?
So I make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Kelly Koch. Is that correct? For June 11th, 2022, from 4:30 to 8:30 PM, as set forth in this application.
Are there a second?
A second.
And a second. Any discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. One-day liquor license for wedding reception at Beezy Park on June 18th, 2022, between the hours of 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM. Detail officer required. And it looks like we have the proper paperwork filed with that. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve, and then I just have one quick question for clarification. So I make a motion to approve the, um, application for a one-day liquor license for Maria Perez for June 18th, 2022, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM.
Is there a second? And a second. What was your question?
It was just a quick question for Vanessa, perhaps. On, on one of the following pages, it lists 17th, 8th, June 17th, 18th, and 19th on the venue contract? I'm just, is it just, I don't need to worry about that?
No, no, no. The liquor's just for the time that is listed.
Yeah.
But they have the rental of the venue, so they can set up the day before and clean up after.
Okay.
Some people choose these three days, but the smaller events will be just one day.
Okay, thank you so much.
The, uh, the previous one that we did had a, the name of the caterer. Is there a caterer on this one? It's just not on the application.
It's called, uh.
See, I think it's called All Fired Up?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that was on the first one.
I know, that's this one.
But is it the same caterer?
No, it's, it's Jos, uh, that staffing by Josie. It should, the contract should be part of the paperwork.
I see.
Like the fourth page.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
There should be a contract.
Yep.
Yeah, it should have, it should have been on the bottom of the first page. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Ratify the contract for Fire Chief Robert Valentine. We met in, um, last week, the week before, I guess. And, um, we were able to come to an agreement with the Fire Chief on, on a contract. Does somebody want to read part of that into the record? Anybody? Dan, you want to take that one?
No.
No?
You want me to read the whole thing?
Well, no, just.
I'll blast through it. It'll take me a minute. I'll just condense it. So there's an appointment here for the Fire Chief. Three-year term, um, commencing beginning on July 1st, 2022, to June 30th, 2025. The town shall pay the Fire Chief the following salary per year. Fiscal year 2023, $84,467. Fiscal year 2024, $88,690. Fiscal year 2025, $93,125. Additional compensation, 15 days of vacation in a 12-month period. No more than 10 days of unused vacation may be carried from one year to another. With sick leave, uh, accrued at 15 days per year. 1.25 accruals per month. Chief shall receive 30% of days accumulated sick leave upon, upon death or retirement. Duties, duties are, Fire Chief, similar to what he's already done. Thank you, Chief. Hours of work, 40 hours a week. What else is in there that's significant?
That pretty much covers it.
Professional insurance liability, a million dollars. Town agrees to pay for that. And then there's some things about death during terms of employment, professional development, automobile residency. So if anyone wants to look at the contract, it's public rocket at this point, or will be. Is that enough?
There a motion?
Make a motion to ratify the contract as presented to us, Mr. Chair.
Second? Any further discussion?
Yes.
Go ahead.
I'm glad the Fire Chief is here. Hello, Chief. Last week, I was a minority vote against the contract, and I wanted to make it clear that my reasoning for not voting for the contract has nothing to do with the hard work that our fire department does in this town, nor the Fire Chief. My, my reason for voting against the contract is specifically because the new contract does not include a clause requiring our Fire Chief to have certification as a Massachusetts emergency medical technician. This, this qualification is an integral part of the Fire Chief job description and was included in the original contract. I recognize and accept that it was not possible for our Fire Chief to achieve this certification during the pandemic. However, that should not be used as a reason to exclude this requirement from the new contract. And I would be willing to reconsider my vote and be in favor of this contract if this certification is added to the contract.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. Chief, thank you. Approve the full-time Water and Sewer Commission Administrative Assistant Position.
Mr. Chair, just to preface the matter, there are currently two administrative positions in the Water and Sewer Department. There is one full-time office manager, and there is a part-time administrative assistant. This is to create a new full-time administrative assistant and replace the part-time administrative assistants. The position was approved by the Water and Sewer Commission, as well as approved at, and budgeted at town meeting.
Okay. There a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the full-time administrative assistant job for the Water and Sewer Department.
Yeah, there a motion. Is there a second?
A second, so may I make a friendly amendment to vote to approve melee leads to the position of full-time administrative assistant at a rate of $24 per hour for 37.5 hours per week as of July 1st, 2022.
Okay, motion and a second. Any further discussion? None. I, I think this is something that's needed, especially with the move to the new building. There shouldn't be two people, there should be two people in the office down there. There shouldn't be one person left alone. And this, this should take care of that. Is that right, Colin? There you are, right back there. I thought that was you in the front row, behind the mask.
Not Colin.
Yeah, that's the general idea.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense for safety, safety purposes. Makes sense. All right. A motion and a second. Any other discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Accept the resignation of John Gobber, if I'm pronouncing that correctly, from the Conservation Commission, May 11th, 2022. And we have his letter where he's resigning effective immediately. We get a motion on that? Accept that?
Make a motion to accept the resignation of John Gobber from the Groveland Conservation Commission. And thank him for his service.
And a second. And a second. Any further discussion? None. All in favor? Unanimous. Discussion and possible vote. Review pay rate change request for Council on Aging Assistant Director.
Mr. Chair, if I may. So the request came to me from the Director of the Council on Aging to make a transfer, as you'll see in the memo submitted, from the van driver salary line item in fiscal year '23, and to transfer that into the Assistant Director's salary. Unfortunately, legally, we do not have the ability to make that transfer without going to a special town meeting. And year-end transfers are something that are typically done the start of May 1st and are for unforeseen circumstances. So that considered, I did have a further conversation with the Director, and there is an ability to find additional funding through the Executive Office of Elder Affairs and their formula grant funding. And they could use that grant to actually fund the additional monies being required for that position. And I believe that the Director is here, as well as some of the Council on Aging members, to speak on that specifically.
Okay. Why don't you speak on it?
Oh, I'm.
Oh, you got anybody?
Yes, so I'm Amanda Fisher. I'm the Director of the Council on Aging. So we plan on using the formula grant that we get through the Executive Office of Affairs to fund the pay change. And then hopefully, next year, we can go ahead and.
to fund the pay change, and then hopefully next year, we can go ahead and do the switch with the van salary.
Is there any questions, Laura?
So do we just need to table this? You don't need a vote from us at all, then?
Well, I thought it was important to present the pay change to you guys.
You would need to vote on changing her pay rate from what it currently is, because currently, we do not have that monies in the budget. We currently have only allocated $37,000 to that salary line item, and that is not the rate that they are proposing.
Should we, should we vote that contingent upon the grant?
So that's my only one concern with this, is it is a grant-funded position, and whether or not those grant funds are guaranteed, there really is no guarantee. Maybe they might be guaranteed for the fiscal year, which would be something that we should definitely consider. But, I mean, unless they're eligible expenses, how it's committed...
Yeah, so I'm also applying for another grant through Mass DOT that could offset some of the other costs that we incur for our van and such, that nature, and other expenses towards the office as well, which is how we were able to get the money from the formula grant over to the salary increase.
So the only thing maybe is making a vote contingent upon, like you said, the availability of the grant funding for those beyond what is currently budgeted in the FY23 budget.
Okay. Anybody got any questions? Go ahead, Dan.
Couldn't we just table it? I mean, kind of like we're counting chickens before they hatch, or, you know? Why couldn't we just find out if we get the grant and then put it on the, on the agenda in a future meeting, and then we could address it at that point in time?
So we do have the formula grant. We virtually get it every year from Elder Service. We got approved for this year already. Just submitted the check, actually, last week for the total...
So then what's the point of contingency if they already got it?
So essentially, they get a lump sum of money that's allocated to the town of Groveland to be dispersed for multiple programs that the Council on Aging puts forward. So it's not just one sum of money going towards a salary. It's a lump of sum awarded to the town to be used for programming and those services to support those programings. So the money they have to allocate internally to make sure that they can cover the expenses of the Council on Aging, the programming, the services that they provide our seniors, in addition to providing the additional funds to that particular Assistant Director.
So what's the point of the contingency? Can you clarify that for me? I'm still unclear on it.
Making sure that the Council on Aging is putting the funds towards the programming for the seniors in Groveland, in addition to putting the funds towards the salary, and not making the town responsible for paying the salary, say something were to occur.
Well, when you get grant money, doesn't it come with guidelines and strings attached, and you simply have to follow the grant rules in order to be compliant? So is, is that just a contingency, or is that just what you're supposed to do?
That's fair.
So part of that grant does allow me to use it towards salaries. It's primarily being used towards salaries currently. We had a remaining balance this year because we were using it for postage and mailout. We have since eliminated that cost from that, what we were using that formula grant for, so that's how we were able to take the funds and put it towards the salary increase. Currently, we don't pay for any programs out of the formula grant. We have the Friends of the Council on Aging who are great support for us and help pay for those expenses for us currently.
Mr. Chair?
Anybody else? Go ahead.
So if I'm reading this correctly, did the town meeting already fund the 30 hours per week at the $30 per hour, or is...
No. So you wouldn't be responsible for that full amount. So you would only be responsible for your portion of, I believe, the town meeting did a 3% increase for her.
So that's why you say partially funded by the town of Groveland.
Yeah.
See, that's where I think we have difficulty making these kind of a vote. This kind of vote is not something I've ever heard of us making. Partially funded by the town of Groveland for 30 hours, seven hours, partially funded by a grant. So this, what, it doesn't make sense to me, the 30 hours, she's working 37 hours a week is what your goal is, correct?
Yes, she's currently working 37.
So 30 hours of the week, you want the town to pay part of it and the grant to pay part of it?
So the goal, so I know the town budget made it so it could not be increased more than what she's currently being paid from you guys. We would pick up that remainder from the formula grant. I think I might have just misworded it wrong there.
Okay, so at the town meeting, though, what was the hourly rate that we approved, like, that we approved for her?
So I believe it was roughly around 24.
$24 an hour for...
From the town, yes.
For 30 hours a week?
Yes.
So you want to raise to 30 hours a week for... Yeah, I just keep reading this, and I'm so sorry. I just keep getting stuck here, because I just don't see how we can manage this as a vote. Could we have some time to, to let the town administrator work on this? Because I don't see how I can word anything here that makes any sense to me with 30 hours partially funded by the town and seven hours partially funded by a grant. It's, unless somebody else can come up with something.
Mr. Chair?
Is the, is the, is what you're requesting, that you will pay for the amount over what was budgeted at town meeting by the grant? Is it that simple?
Yes.
Yeah, it is that simple.
Yes.
And do we have the authority to vote on that?
So I, I...
Pardon my ignorance here, but if you have grant money for that purpose, why do you need our approval?
So I was instructed to receive your approval.
So you need to have, as the Personnel Board, the Board of Selectmen has the ultimate authority to create positions and to appoint and hire and to alter any of the pay rates of any of our employees. So it must be voted on by the Board of Selectmen in order for us to sign off on a pay rate change form, which is different than what we voted on at town meeting.
But we need a funding mechanism, and we need to be 100% sure that there's no gray here, that your grant funds are available, so that we're not on the hook for any shortfall or any oversight or undersight. So it has, I haven't read the grant, but will the grant pay for the overage?
So because it's a lump sum, I am not managing the grant, so the Council on Aging is managing the grant. So that's why I recommended that there be a contingency of some nature, that those, that the town is not liable to pay the additional unless it, it will, the additional beyond what was approved at town meeting. Because if you have a salary line item at town meeting, it's voted on, we legally cannot spend over that salary line, and we are capped. We are instructed, that is all we can do. But with the grant, we have no control over that grant, and those monies are not in, in the Board of Selectmen's control, per se. So that's why I mentioned the contingency, so that we can make sure that if they do spend the funds on something else, just hypothetically, that the town doesn't have to pay the additional salary beyond what it already allocated at town meeting, because we've given this employee more hours to work, and legally, by law, we must pay them for the hours worked.
Right, so we are legal, legally on the hook for it, so we need to make sure Council on Aging doesn't make any mistakes. So I would be okay with, you know, you can do what you want.
Yeah.
Just don't overspend, because we're not paying it.
Okay. Yeah, so with the contingency that you guys would not be responsible for FY...
You know, I'll let you manage the money. I'm not going to micromanage it. I appreciate what you're doing.
Thank you.
I'm not involved, but don't...
Don't overspend.
Don't overspend, because then what? Then the town's got to come up with the money, because somebody made a mistake.
Understood.
So, I mean, we need some assurances that you have the funds and you're paying attention, and...
Yes, I will not overspend the budget.
I can make a motion, Mr. Chair, that's where you...
Jason, hold up on a motion. Jason wants to...
My only concern is that it's going to fall to the town the following year. Now, that's a pretty hefty increase.
So we will...
You know what I'm saying?
I'm comfortable doing it, again, with the formula grant for the following year. Hopefully, with the reclassifications, that I'll see the need for the increase on the town's responsibility, but I understand there's no money in the current town budget for such an increase.
But there will be an increase if we vote it, because that's what we do. That's what this year to do, is to set that increase.
Well, we'd be forced, if we don't have the funds, to just let them go. They just can't get the renewal in year two, three, or five, or down the road. I mean, if you only have grant money for two years, then you can project out two years at the most, right? I just think if we come up short, we've got to go back to the, what was before, and that might be upsetting to some, and certainly the people that have the jobs, but if, if this is, the kind of temp work is on a year-by-year budget.
Yes, so I understand. So a contingency for two years based on you guys not moving past the current town responsibility and formula grant funded? Did I clarify that correctly, or...
Yeah, but to Jason's point, I think we can only go with one year, right?
Or one year, and then...
Kathy, you got something?
Yep.
Yeah, I just get, I'm still stumbling as to how we can vote this. I think, I understand that we need to vote something, because I don't want to see there be no vote of the Board of Selectmen on a salary. And I also know that you have grant funds that you, you manage, the Council on Aging manages their grant funds, and I don't want to interfere with that. But I want to be really upfront with you, like, from my perspective, that next year's budget is going to be tighter than this year's budget, and, and I think everyone at this table knows that.
Yeah.
We have a number of big-ticket items, and that, that the ability to backfill this will not, I would tell you right now, I don't see that we would have it. So I wouldn't want you to get your hopes up and think that we think we're going to have it, because I say, I would say, no, we have another grant expiring in another department that we have to figure out. And as you saw with the school budget, the school had to go and, and cut back positions. So next year, I would anticipate, unless there's a windfall from somewhere we don't know about, this would have to be like an ongoing thing.
Okay, understood.
If that's what the wishes of the Council on Aging are, to redirect the grant funds away from the services and into salary, if they feel that's the best use of those funds.
Yes.
And, and this fund allows you to do just that?
Yes.
Because you funded a grant, a van driver with it?
So we fund our outreach position. Currently, the reclassified positions are already funded partially out of it and, as well as van. So, yes, quite a few positions are funded out of this particular grant.
Okay, so do we need to vote, like, the cap on the salary, or what do we need to vote here?
We need to vote on the rate that you're going to pay this individual for the next fiscal year, and that takes into consideration that, what she would be receiving from the town side of things, what she's receiving currently from the formula grant, and then in addition to that. So that hourly rate, as they projected, is the 30.
So that means we would reduce the hours that we're paying her for, but you don't want to reduce them, because then she goes below benefits. So we're going around the circle again. I don't know if my Selectman McDonald has a solution. I don't right now. Sorry to say, I don't.
I'm...
That's, we can work out the hours. It's the rate that needs set, and then we can adjust per the line item what monies are coming out, based upon the 52.2 weeks that we calculate your annual salary on to get that figure. So all that other semantics, it, it really is, those are things we can handle behind the scene. It's just the fact of whether or not you want to charge, you want to pay, you want to change that current pay rate from the 20 to the 30.
So from $24 an hour to $30 an hour is a fairly big pay and rate increase.
Anybody else on the Council on Aging Board want to speak? Has she done a great job?
I would just like to...
Go ahead.
Anita Wright, 21 Ashcroft Terrace, Groveland, Massachusetts, to sit on the Board of Directors presently with Irene Thomas on the Personnel Committee. You guys on May 9th approved a reclassification of job from Program and Transportation Coordinator to Assistant Director of the Council on Aging, and I don't believe there was any money attached to that at that time. So again, we were working internally. The person has been getting part of their hours paid by the town and part of their seven and seven, or 7.5 hours paid by the formula grant for years. This is not a new thing. But along with the additional responsibilities and the reclassification to an Assistant Director position, she should get some compensation for that. We recognize that the town was up against the, in a corner up against the wall this year with the school and the possibility of a, of a true and a half override. So money never came up at the town meeting or at, or any other formality. So we amongst ourselves wanted to ask for an additional $10,000 on her salary to support that Assistant Director position. We didn't even bother to ask for it. The Director and the Treasurer and the rest of the Board has examined our finances that we work with in the Board, in the, in the, in the Council on Aging, and are able to see our way through to using the formula grant to pay for that additional dollars. I don't have the exact numbers in my head. Kathy, I think that's what you're reacting to, up to $30 an hour, or up to whatever. It's not new. We've been using those funds for a long time, so we know we have that. In addition, the Director and the Assistant Director have been working arduously to get the paper costs and the postal costs down from almost, I think it's over 1,200 mailed newsletters to going to email. We've saved a considerable amount of the formula grant money that would have been spent on postage is now in the bank because of those smart changes that have been made. So we have, we have funds, and we believe this is the right way to do it. We will come back to the town next year in a formal way, in a warrant, or whatever it is we need to do, in order to recognize the need to compensate that position. And we have data, data supporting that $10,000 ask for, for down-the-road 24. But for this year, we believe we can make it right out of our own funds, both this grant, and I believe another grant that she's working on that, that we'll, we'll know more about in December. So I don't see the town taking a fall for a dime.
Okay. Mr. Chair? Any question for Anita?
I do. So we budgeted for the old salary, and you want to give a pay raise. So Council on Aging is going to pay for the pay raise?
Correct.
That simple? Was that, that's it in a nutshell?
Yes, sir.
So if I make a motion, it's going to be on that, and you will pay for the pay raise, and we'll stick with the old numbers.
And the Treasurer, we meet once a month. The Treasurer hawks every dime that's spent. We know, we have a ledger sheet that's different than the accountant in town, and it's different than anybody else. We have our own Treasurer and our own accounting for our monies. So we're on top of that month-to-month. There's going to be no, you know, careless expenses or services cut because of salary that's paid. It's, it's just not going to happen.
Okay. Dan, Rebecca, is there a particular way you think that the, the motion should be stated?
No, just as long as you, you vote on the pay rate.
Okay. Dan, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion that we approve the Council on Aging proposal for a pay rate increase with the stipulation that the Council on Aging pay for those additional compensated hours and, and pay. Hours and pay.
We promise no over, we promised we won't go over ours.
You're, you're going to manage the, the hours and, so I think it's, it's two things.
It's monitored. It's, it's...
Right? It's not just pay, but it's how many hours? Want to say it again?
No, you're doing fine. Is there a second? I knew you were going to do that. A motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Jason, you got something?
Yeah, I'd like to make a friendly amendment that we reevaluate it during the budget, because we'll have our...
Salary study.
Salary study done, and then we'll have a much better idea, so we're going into the budget season, we can have a realistic number to put in there, whether it's higher or lower.
So then it might be higher.
Yeah, it could be. You okay with that friendly amendment?
Yeah, subject to review after we receive our staff and wage report.
That okay with, with the, the board? Go ahead, Anita.
Do we know when the common study will be done? Will it be done this year?
It will be done this year. Okay, thank you.
All right, there's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? None? All in favor? In unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Next, Town Clerk's request for additional hours for the Assistant Clerk. And I did see Beth is here. Beth, can you go up to the podium? And we did get paperwork from you supporting the request. Could you just... Could you just give us a rundown?
Currently, the Assistant Town Clerk, we voted for it in Fiscal '22, and we did not spend all of the money in Fiscal '22. So there's an additional, there's currently $4,305 in that account. We only have two pay periods left, which will drop that by another $840. We are asking for another 35 hours for $735 to run out the rest of the year, and basically to help us get organized, make the move, make the most of the time we have to kind of organize the vault and get rid of a few more things that we, we really need to, the time to go through the vault. So because we did not spend all of the Assistant Clerk's salary, we're asking if we can use some of that that's left over toward additional hours for this year. And it's just until the end of this year, June 30.
Anybody got any questions? Or Beth, go ahead.
So the Assist, you have an Assistant now, correct?
Correct.
And I thought you, Julie is the Assistant?
Correct.
Okay. And Assistant works 19 hours a week?
Director's 10.
10. So is it non-benefit? Does this, does this violate that, or are we okay with that?
No, it does not.
Because it's temporary?
It's, that's correct.
Okay. That, that was my only question.
And it doesn't come up to 19 anyway, for any of the weeks, so.
Oh, for adding the additional hours she wanted, because she's at 10 now?
Right.
Oh, okay, fine. That, that's all I want to know. I'm pleased with this.
This, this is only five, five weeks, 35 hours a week.
We originally put the request in, in the beginning of May, and so I asked for more weeks at that time, but we would still like to be able to use the $735, so that's 35 hours in total.
Okay.
To go over the last five weeks of the year.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Dan.
The same line item on the budget, so we don't need a, a transfer at all.
Correct.
Okay.
It's already there, it exists, we're not going to use it. By the time you get to the end of the year, there'll still be in excess of $2,730 that we did not use because we didn't have an Assistant, I did not have an Assistant for the full year.
Okay, could we have a motion?
So a motion to approve an additional seven hours per week for five weeks for the Assistant...
Well, if you just want to make it a total of 35 hours...
35 hours.
For s...
For the Assistant Town Clerk, for a total of $735.
Right, because we don't have that number of weeks anymore.
Okay.
Could we have a motion?
Could it start this week, if I can ask?
A second. Further discussion? None? All in favor?
Okay.
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Cable Department Creation, Chris. Quick to the podium and...
Just to progress, Mr. Chair, I've been working closely with Chris LaFory on this particular item. The item was originally requested by Celeste and Catherine Ellis about the current state of the Cable Department. Chris and I have been meeting for the last, I want to say, three months now, trying to figure out exactly what the mission and the focus of this particular department would be, specifically with the Cable Advisory Board no longer having members and no longer contributing towards the programming and/or review of the Comcast contract that we've been working on or just finalized. So Chris and I had put together some information relative to what we believe that the department would look like if structured, and the positions that would fall underneath that department, with some of the description as to the duties of both the Manager of that department, as well as the Cable Technician. The Manager's description currently does not exist, that is brand-new. Cable Technician's job description is what we had advertised the last three years. And Chris can speak more directly, but I just wanted to make sure to preface that with some of the information that's been coming forward about what the department does, what Chris does, who does what, and I...
Chris, did you have something to add?
Uh, yeah, no, we're just, we're just trying to clarify and sort of, you know, cross the i's and dot the t's. You know, I've been managing things since 2011, but it's never really been set in stone or, you know, formally acknowledged that way. But I've been running both the channels and planning the upgrades and all of that. So this was, I've been working with Rebecca to sort of formalize it and come up with how it should be organized and, and run.
Any questions for either Chris or Rebecca? Dan?
Oh, just questions for Kathy. Are you satisfied with the report?
I like it a lot. I like it very much, and I, I see that you put down, we have two technicians, but at times maybe we'd have more depending on what's going on. So this, this could lead to then an actual budget, right?
This could what?
Lead to a budget, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I requested doing a budget through the, the budget season, and I did prepare one, so...
Okay.
Yeah, that's ready to go. We, we can do that next year and go through the, what is it, the Finance Board or...
Right.
So it's a little bit different with that, because the monies have come from a different funding source.
Yes.
It's not as though they come from the operational fund, so they wouldn't have their specific... I mean, I guess we could do a line item within that particularly.
It could just be a sub-report at the end of the, at the end of the town meeting report, that just says, we had, this is what our cable...
Yeah.
Cable department spends and what they did.
Yeah.
You know, just because folks don't even know really, I think.
Yeah.
So this, this formalizes it, so this is perfect.
Right.
As far as I can see, I, I don't think we missed anything here. Thank you.
Okay, is there a motion?
So we're going to approve it? These, it's not the department and the job descriptions?
Yes, essentially.
Okay.
Since the department doesn't exist, then the job descriptions are relatively new.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to formally create a Cable Department with the job descriptions in this document of Manager, general responsibility set forth herein, and Cable, camera Cable Technicians as described herein as, as well.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
A motion and a second. Further discussion? Anybody? None? All in favor? Unanimous. Thank you.
Would now be a good time to mention the grant, or should I not mention that?
Oh, yeah, let's hear about this. I want the surprise. I don't know about it.
Oh, well, just, just real quick, we, we received a grant for $47,000 from the...
Community Compact.
The Community Compact, thank you, to put in fiber optic cable between this building, the Police Department Fire Station, and the library. So we're going to be running high-speed Internet cables and upgrading the network infrastructure and getting everything sorted for our transition to our high-definition channel that will appear at some point in the next, what is it, 24 to 36 months, per the new contract going into effect. So that's really good news, and it should solve a lot of problems and issues that have plagued all three buildings for quite some time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Anybody else?
Yeah, could I just say?
Go ahead.
This is fantastic, and I, I don't know, I'm probably the only one that remembers that this was said, it couldn't be done, when we were trying to negotiate with Comcast to do this for us. There was no way they were going to do this.
Yeah, they quoted us at a, at a higher number.
Oh, a higher number, it was like $100,000.
Yeah.
It was ridiculous. So this is really, really a big deal.
Been on my wish list for a long time.
I know, and again, I, I was thinking we'd never get it. So thank you, both of you. Great work, thanks.
Chris, before you go.
Sure.
Really simple. In the, this manages responsibility.
Yeah.
And it provides technical recommendations relating to GTV, engineering, and audio, video, video in the Town Hall Meeting Room, Public Safety Meeting Room, and Head End. What is Head End?
So that's where we send our signals out to Comcast. That is basically, we beam from here over to the Fire Department Closet, and then that goes out to Comcast. So if things break, sometimes things die. Literally last week, I had a piece of equipment in there die. I had to replace it to get the channel back up on the air. So it's like managing that and making sure that's running smooth and, and identifying issues. A lot of the time, problems that we have are on Comcast's end. Every now and then, it's, it's something with our signal flow and, and system and, and all of that.
Was there, there was a motion, and there was a second. I think you seconded it.
I think we voted it.
Did we vote it?
What's that?
I think we voted it.
We, we voted it.
Did we run the tape?
No, this was the Cable Department. Yeah, we did. You're right, thank you.
I love this.
Next is 46 Washington Street update, Mike Dempsey. Mike, you're going to give us a rundown on...
Yes.
46 Washington.
Mike Dempsey, representing Community Preservation Committee tonight. So almost two years ago, your Board put in a CPA grant for 46 Washington Street, and that was approved at town meeting. So what I want to do tonight is just give you a quick update on what's been done and what's going to be done. So this year, we'll use the CPA grant money to landscape the grounds of the building, perform a land survey of the parcel, so we know its extent, remove some of the fencing in the rear, and improve the overall look of the building and the exterior. Selectman Castronellis brought this up, and I've worked closely with her to kind of figure out what we could do to improve the place and make the neighbors happy. So in addition to that, we did use some of the money, some of the funds from the grant to protect the building from unforeseen degradation that was recommended by the Building Inspector. And that involved repairing the heating system and structural columns in the basement. So that's, that was done. So that, that all will come out of the grant, but there is some money that needs to be spent if we are going, some already has been, but to consider renting the building, as I talked to you before about. So Community Preservation Committee needs to approve some small cost to come out of administrative funds. So that will be done at the next meeting. I previously gave you a copy of the latest lease to review. I believe it was on your meeting on May 9. And just some things to emphasize about that lease. It was a short-term lease for only one year. It's going to cover, the income from it is going to cover all the costs that the town paid for insurance, heat, electricity, amounts to about $5,000 per year. I also made some changes to that lease after Selectman McDonald recommended a good solution on the electricity increases and making sure that the building was heated by natural gas only. So that's all been done. And really, the last piece is the septic system. I have worked with the Board of Health on that, and a volunteer came forward to do some inspection work on it. So I have to meet with the Board of Health as soon as possible to just iron out the final details on that. So another thing is that Town Council approved leasing the building out, and I think we met their requirements. The lease has to be less than $35,000, a short-term lease, and then no add or request for proposals, formal request for proposals would be needed. But one point is that this lease, that I would like you to sign, only covers the first-floor space. That's one-third of the building. So two-thirds of the building remains rentable. I think as Rebecca told me, that perhaps somebody else was interested and rented the building, especially if it was for storage, that's entirely possible. But any rentals, just like this rental, are subject to zoning laws and approval by the Building Inspector. So as I said, I think this lease will enable the town to maintain the building until a feasibility study is done and we determine any future use rehabilitation requirements. And I, I think the Town Administrator has applied for a grant recently, but that grant, but the lease won't interfere with the grant request. The Town Administrator is also pursuing recreational uses of the parcel right now. I know in my discussion with Kathy that we were interested in skating and fishing, pretty much simple recreational uses. And right now, she's in some negotiations with the Catholic Diocese who owns where the pond was, so that's ongoing. So I just wanted to emphasize that this lease is part of an ongoing and difficult effort, I think, to clean up a town-owned eyesore and save the town some money, develop future uses of a historic building, and also encourage local businesses at the same time. So I am, again, asking the Board to consider signing the lease tonight and demonstrate that we can get difficult things accomplished. Happy to answer. Any questions?
Anybody, any questions for Mike?
Um, yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I've had, Mike and I have been emailing back and forth, so we've had lots. I guess I keep thinking about this. Of course, my, my biggest wish, hope for this property is to, to restore it to a, a park, something that looks like a park, not what it looks like now, which is kind of the town dump.
Right.
And I'm, I, I'm wary, I guess I'm second-thinking about leasing it prior to cleaning, finishing the cleanup, because I don't want to spend money outfitting the inside of it until we've cleaned up the outside, which is what the whole neighborhood is looking at. I, it could, used to be such a beautiful place, from what I've heard. I, it was before my time, but what I heard, it was a swimming pond for the town, and it was gorgeous. And it's nestled right in one of the most populated areas of town, and there's very few places you can go in this town now for passive recreation, because you have the baseball park, there's baseball games, you know, pines, there's baseball games, you know. You've got the Johnson's Pond is nice and peaceful and quiet if you want to go on the water, but we don't have something you could walk to in the winter to skate on, and I really would like to just slow it down a little bit on the lease idea and, and clean it up first, and maybe even get some input from the neighborhood, of the neighbors that live around it as well, because I hadn't, and I think it's an idea that's worth thinking about, because it helps, it helps pay for things, I get that. But I'm just concerned that we're jumping ahead, and we don't even have the septic system checked yet, right? We need that check thing to happen. So I'm all for the arts, you know that. I, I love the arts. I'd love to have a mural on the side of that building that shows the old mill site.
Yeah.
That'd be amazing, but I feel like baby steps right now, just get it cleaned up. And, and I know you're doing all the work, so if you want to make, have something for me to do that I could understand, I'd be glad to do that. But I, I'd like to pause on the, on the lease for just a little bit, not say no, but just pause it.
No.
And clean up the outside and, and get a look at the septic situation.
Yes.
Yeah.
So no more funds are going to be spent from the grant that have anything to do with improving the building. We have, mo- most of the money in the grant will go towards a land survey and cleaning up and landscaping the outside, taking the fence down, et cetera. The, the item, I think I mentioned, that we don't have to do is... The, the item, uh, I think I mentioned that we don't have to do is remove there where all the DEP buildings and connections in the rear. That we don't have to do. So, some of the money saved there will cover what was done to preserve the building. So, um, you know, I, I, I think that we can do both, you know, and, uh, in, in proceed with that. As I mentioned, the septic system has been checked. It's a working septic system, but now it's just a matter of sitting down with the Board of Health and having them tell us yea or nay as far as that's what they're gonna accept. So, that's been done. So, I just need to schedule a meeting with them.
Uh, any other questions for Mike? Go ahead. No, go ahead, Mike.
All right. So, my only main concern is if we're gonna rent that out, we need to put separate meters for each floor, because I don't think it's fair that somebody rents it out and they have, you know, kilns in there if they're making clay sculptures, or if they're using power tools. I got the history of the light bills here and when they were, it's the past seventeen years. And, um, some months it's, you know, fifty bucks, some months it's a hundred bucks. You know, this past winter with nobody in there was just over a hundred. So, I'm just, I think that's something we should do if we're gonna rent it out, so that way it's not costing us any money. You know, whoever's in there using whatever, they'll have to pay for it, but I think that's the most fair way.
Right.
Um, I absolutely love the idea of seeing the building get cleaned up, used, 'cause it is an eyesore. And, uh, that's just my biggest suggestion, and I think we should all really consider that.
Yeah, we, we would have to do that, obviously, yes.
I just wanted to make sure.
Dan?
Yeah, do you have a formal lease drafted, or just a kind of a summary of, uh, terms?
No, that's the lea- that lease that you looked at before? The lease that-
I think I asked you if you drafted it on, uh, or whether or not Town Council did, so.
No.
I mean, I had concerns about some of the language and just kinda buttoned it up a little bit in terms of, uh, utility usage and-
Yeah.
Appreciate you looking into the natural gas for the heat, but, I mean, I don't want him running the air conditioning and he mentions kilns, so. Is there any way we can negotiate that, say, in the near term, if the average electric bill was, say, a hundred and fifty bucks a month, they would agree to pay the overage?
Yes, that I put-
'Cause there are variable costs and, and it's, I wanna make sure it's smart business here and not, you know, we agree to three hundred dollars a month and we, we pay four. I mean, it's like making, you know, losing a dollar on every sale and making it up on volume. So, I just, I wanna be smart about this, and I'm not, I'm grasping at straws on what are the real numbers. You know, and they're gonna pay their own insurance?
Yes.
Right, they're gonna have a million-dollar liability if they burn the place down, if there's a slip and fall, personal injury?
This is a copy of the lease.
All right, I mean, I didn't wanna nitpick you last time, I mean, I am what I am.
So, here's what you suggested, that you put in there.
All right. If I can, Mr. Chair, a second, I'm just-
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, quickly.
All right, so you revised the language on utilities and service. Landlord shall be responsible for electric, landlord shall be responsible for electric and water utilities and services in connection with the premises for the term of this lease, period. Tenant shall be responsible for any amount over the average electric monthly bill of a hundred and sixty-five dollars, payable to the landlord quarterly. Tenant shall be responsible for heating only with natural gas and all gas utility costs and services in connection with the premises for the lease of this, term of this lease. Will there be any, um, significant water usage on the property?
I don't believe so. But, you know, typically, you can't charge for water use.
Well, residential only, commercial, you can, you can whack 'em. It's a habitability issue in landlord tenant, but we can charge for water. Is there anybody know what the water bill is over there? Is it just flushing toilets?
I'm sure it's just a minimum.
All right. That's a moot point.
They weren't washing any vehicles over there, to my knowledge.
Then they're not gonna do anything like that? I don't know, I, I don't know what it takes to make clay pots and... I don't know if you-
Anybody else question for Mike?
Uh, just to, just to recap, I mean, I, I guess, like, when I talk, we've talked before too about, um, town use of the building, you know, like whether, um, clubs or sports or anything. And, and the thought, I'd have thought if it ever got cleaned up, would you ever use it for a pop-up art sales? 'Cause you could open the garage sale, but not if we tie it up with the tenant. And, that's what I'm a little bit worried about, like, right at the very beginning of this project, before we've gotten really anywhere, before we've really gotten input from the residents as they see it get cleaned up, you know, somebody approached you, which is, I, I understand that, people know you, and, and inquired about being, getting some art space. But, we never publicly advertised that we were gonna let this building be used for that. And, I guess, I'm just kind of cautious and conservative in that manner, that I feel that I'd rather proceed a little more slowly right now and see us do the survey to see where the property lines are, determine the cleanup cost, 'cause you don't know cleanup cost till you start doing it, right? And then the landscape cost, you know, everything sometimes mushrooms up, so to put somebody in the building before we've achieved what we told the town meeting we were gonna do, that's my, that's where I keep hitting that block and saying, I'd like to pause and get that work done, get the survey done, get the fencing gone, get it cleaned up.
Chair. Yeah, go ahead, Dan.
Um, you, it's, it's blank as to the, uh, term of the lease and when it will terminate. Would, would, would they be agreeable to maybe just have it terminate on June thirtieth, so we can figure out what we're doing for the next budget? So, I mean, it's a little less than a year, but not-
Right.
Too much less, but, and then we can circle the wagons and find out what people in town want and don't want. But, I mean, that's gonna take a process, so I think in the interim, we'll have somebody in there, we'll have it insured. So, I mean, if we're not gonna use it in the next ten months, I'm, I'm okay with it if, with, with these, uh, additional changes that you presented.
You know, that was the intent, to keep the lease a short-term, uh, not to tie the per- the building up permanently. You know, we started out with thinking about a two-year lease, but then in discussion with Rebecca, we decided to reduce it to a one-year. And, you know, I think keeping it in line with the fiscal year probably makes sense, because I, I would hope that a year from now, we'll be able to better make decisions about the building and the future of the building.
Mr. Chair, can I ask some questions about the maintenance and the funds that were appropriated?
Go ahead.
I received a call from a resident and the, um, inquired of me whether or not, you know, that the funds were being used, uh, properly over there, so I'm not being accusatory, but, um, what, and, 'cause I don't know. But, were the funds appropriated for exterior, uh, maintenance and upkeep, but not interior? Can you clarify that point for me as to-
Sure.
'Cause, uh, I guess there was some HVAC worked on there, and was that properly appropriated for? And, that's my question to you, I wanna clear the air on that topic.
Sure. So, the, as I mentioned, the, um, I met with the building inspector. We were in there several times, I was in there with some of you folks, and also with Rebecca. And, the building inspector looked at it just to see what the building needed as far as staying safe. And, he recommended that the heating system be improved and that we monitor the temperature in there, and also that we put some structural columns up in the basement so that the building wouldn't collapse, because some had been removed probably twenty years ago by the highway department or the water department, so they could park trucks in the basement. So, what I then did was, uh, get an engineer evaluation of the building, bought a temperature monitor, inexpensive temperature monitor for the building, got some quotes on heating system, uh, repairs, and also a quote on the concrete supports. So, those came to a figure of approximately seven thousand dollars. And, so, that was paid for out of the grant. We have, the, the Community Preservation Committee has done this before. They have to validate this at, at a, in a meeting, but we've done this before. When the scope of a grant changes, in a, in a case like this, we had, um, I believe it was about almost nine thousand dollars in the grant for removal of the DEP buildings and cleaning up the rear of the site. That freed up, as I say, almost nine thousand dollars. So, with the money that would be left, I think that it was prudent to probably do what we did to keep the building standing and in place. But, as I say, that will be brought up at our next CPC meeting.
But, the funds were available and they were, they were appropriated appropriately?
Yes, yes, I mean, you know, um, many times, the, the, when a project is written, it's almost, uh, sometimes it's almost a year, but it's usually at least eight to ten months before it gets approved and you start, and so many things can change along the way. So, in the past, uh, down at the pines, we've done it, a couple of other projects, we've done it, where it didn't make sense to do exactly the scope of the building, uh, the scope of the grant to, to do. In this case, not do anything with the building, so.
The interior, you mean?
Yeah, right, right. So, um, we have done this before. It's not done lightly, because we have to make sure that whatever is gonna be done still fits in the CPA requirement. So, you couldn't decide to, uh, you know, I don't know, go out and buy a new vehicle so you could plow the driveway or something like that.
Would it be considered maintenance and that, and is that within CPA?
Oh, no, you can't consider it maintenance either. You can't do maintenance under CPA.
Wouldn't the HVAC system fall under that, or sis- building systems?
Well, you know, technically, the, 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 um, building had two heating systems in it. One of them, uh, was heating just the basement. The other one was used to heat the first floor. That one completely failed, so it, it had to be removed, it was a safety factor. And then, the building wasn't heating properly with just the one system in the basement. So, it needed some reducting, so it really was more than just straight maintenance, you know, as opposed to, um, maintaining the, the furnace.
So, was the safeguard the building?
Yes.
And that would qualify?
It, it, as I say, it was under the advice of the building inspector.
Well, I wanna make sure that's right.
Okay, Jason, you got something?
Yes, I just wanted to get some clarification on the, the grant that we're attempting to get for the, uh, use of the building. 'Cause I was under the impression that it was contingent on the building not having a use. And, as soon as it gets a lease, then it has a use, and the amount of time that it hasn't had a use would potentially affect us getting the grant to actually do something with the outside of the building, which we can't currently do.
I can't answer that, only Rebecca can answer it.
Would that be, uh, accurate?
That is correct, the grant is under mass development and it's an underutilized properties grant. So, any of the monies that would be funded would be to bring the building up to compliance for use. So, if it's no longer underutilized, then we would not qualify for the funds.
Yes, but you told me, correct, that the short-term lease wasn't gonna affect that grant?
We weren't able to apply for the grant because of the fact that we're considering a lease option.
How could that be, because it isn't leased?
Discussing leasing the building, so I can't-
I know, but-
Sign an application saying that we're not gonna be doing anything to the building.
Mr. Chairman, I, I have the article.
Yeah.
So, the article, um, that we voted, and I, I understand what you're saying, over time, things change, but still, the intent was to appropriate twenty-one thousand dollars for the new mill pond phase-one cleanup and land survey, meant the project managed by the Groveland Board of Selectmen and the Community Preservation Coordinator under CPA category of recreation. So, the intent was to clean it up for, for recreational use. And, hearing that there's another grant that could probably be more beneficial to that building than any small amount of money that we could generate through a lease, I would, I would, again, pu- put a pause on this and, and pull back off the lease and see if we can get that. Because if we start changing the interior of the building, we don't know what else will go wrong in there. It's really old and, and not well-maintained, you know what I mean? They, I know we've had a few of the building inspector walk-through, and it's just, it's a delicate condition. And, I really do wanna see this restored to recreational use. So, I would hate to lose a grant just for a few hundred dollars of rent for a few months. I mean, could we apply for the grant if we pull back?
The deadline's already passed, it was this Friday. I didn't, I had too much information relative to changes that were made in the building, so filling out the application, I had to not move forward with the application, because I couldn't say that no work had been done on the building.
So, can we never apply for this kind of grant?
We could potentially apply the next round, if, depending on what the status of the building is.
To me, this, this is a game chan- this is a grant game changer for me. I mean, I, I really do, I really do adore this property and wanna see it taken care of. And, I think following the plan that we started with is our best path right now.
Dan, you had something?
Yeah, I didn't know there was a grant. How much money did we miss out on?
Um, we didn't have a, an entire estimate at this point, because we were trying to figure out what work had already been done and what was still required to bring the building up to code.
So, are we being penny-wise and pound-fullish, pursuing a lease, Rebecca?
Yes.
I, I wouldn't say that, I just, I, I, we can't pursue that particular grant at this point in time. We've missed our opportu- opportunity for this year, this current fiscal year. We could pursue something in the future if we wanted to.
Okay, but in terms of making the decision, what are the prere- what were the prerequisites on the grant that we missed out on? And if it's our annual recurring grant or application, I think we should start with the answer and work backwards. If we're, you know, prohibited or somehow disqualified from obtaining full coup dollars because we spend a dollar, then maybe we sit on it for a year and don't... It's kinda like you wanna improve the property to keep it from wasting, but if you do so, they say, well, you don't need our free money.
So, you can-
So, what do we gotta do to get the free money and kinda start with the answer and work backwards? What is the laundry list of what we have to tell them? Yeah, we didn't do anything, we didn't fix the HVAC, we didn't have a tenant in there. There was tumbleweed blowing through the building.
Well, obviously, you don't want the building to fall and disrepair, but if you've done something like put in a lally column, put in, um, the thermostat to ensure that the, the, um, the stone field foundation is not settling and, and the structure is not compromised, those types of things are not necessarily an issue. But, once you occupy and have a certificate of occupancy to occupy the building, it changes the, the, the nature of the building itself, and it is no longer underutilized. You have found a purpose, you are making monies off of said purpose, and you are investing in the rehabilitation of the building, and therefore do not qualify as an underutilized property. But, like the lally column, like little things like that, to make sure that the structure itself stays, those are okay expenses, it's just the actual occupancy of the building disqualifies you from pursuing that particular grant.
Well, this is late-breaking news to me, but with this late-breaking news, I think it's, uh, it's penny-wise and pound-fullish. We can't, I mean, unless the grant money is like a couple thousand bucks, then- We can't, I mean, unless the grant money is like a couple thousand bucks, then whatever. But if it's tens and thousands of dollars or more, then we can't accept 300 and change a month plus utilities and, and, you know? Cut our nose off despite our face, Mike. Just it won't, it doesn't make dollars and cents. If we can get a hundred thousand dollar grant, I can't get a tenant in there to muddle the water and frustrate the process. I mean, it's, appreciate the ideas, but it's, it's, it's not, it's not smart money.
Just like you, I never heard this before. This is new to me tonight.
Well, we got to shift with the shifting sands. We just shifted, I think.
I think we did.
Mr. Chair.
I mean, we, we, I brought this up back in the end of October. So this has been out there for over eight, eight months, just about. And I'm very unhappy to learn that, you know, the efforts have, the efforts in time that I've put in, the interests that Mr. Alado has brought forward are all for naught because we didn't know about some requirement of a grant. Why would I have wasted my time? Why would he have wasted his time? So I apologize to the board and I'm sorry that, that I took your time up.
Mr. Chairman, Mike, Mike, you never take our time up. Every time you come before us, I learn more things. And for me, this is a learning curve, the whole process. You obviously have been at this for a while and you know it so well. But, I mean, we were at one point talking about the vacant building being a huge insurance problem for us. And then that's why you came forward with that. I get, I mean, everything followed into, everything followed everything, and now we've reached another turning point. You know, I did not know about these kind of grants, but it makes sense that underutilized town property would be more eligible for, for money than a property that we're getting money off of. I mean, again, it's, it's a learning curve. You have not taken up any of my time, for sure, because I learned a lot. And I appreciate everything that you've done for this property. Because if you hadn't helped me on it, it would still be piled up with junk. And hopefully someday it won't be. It'll be better.
Mike, I just have a question. I don't know whether you're the best one or Rebecca would, if the building goes from a unoccupied building to a occupied building, what's the savings in insurance?
We'll actually have to pay $600 from changing the insurance to pay a penalty on closing our insurance early.
Of course.
But then, then you save, but after that?
Afterwards.
But only for a year is the benefit going to outweigh that $600 or will you just break even?
I don't know.
Dan, you want to wrap this up?
Well, I think it shed light on, we need some sort of due date monitor on when our deadlines are. I mean, if it, we're a day late and a dollar short. No apology necessary, Mike. I, I feel for you. It's a wild goose chase. Ring around the rosy for a lot of people. So we should avoid these things and, you know, I mean, Rebecca, somehow, some way, we got to know about, you know, what's looming on the horizon for deadlines. So somehow, we need, as a board, to get a calendar of events and, and what deadlines are to submit paperwork. And we need to make sure that we're aware of what the criteria is so that we can, you know, make the sound decisions and, you know, I don't like stringing people along. I apologize to you. How about that? And the potential tenant, but, you know, I'm not a grant guy. So maybe I need to be a grant guy. But, that's all.
No, I don't, I don't think we need to do any kind of a vote on this. It was just listed as an update and Mike provided that and we were able to come up with some information. And I'm sure you're going to be working with Rebecca on what the next step would be. Anybody in agreement that we don't need a, any kind of a vote?
Yeah, I agree right now. We're not paused.
Next, discussion concerning VZ Park. Dan, you want to just put on the agenda?
VZ Park?
Yeah.
Put Mike on the spot again. I don't know if it was last year or the year before, but I mean, the staff over there, and I just wanted to circle back on it. And it's probably what jogged my memory is I have clients and issues come up and so I think of things, you know? But I want to make sure that the status of anybody working for the town is legally copastatic and if they're considered employees, that they're paid on a paycheck. And if they're not employees and they are 1099, that we can back that up legally and do we have insurance certificates on anybody? So my questions for VZ Park and people that work there are, do we 1099 anyone? And if so, what are the circumstances? And, and maybe we need some sort of review on that.
Mike, I don't know whether you're the best person to answer that or Rebecca. You want to, Mike?
I'm just, I know, because I recall that we had this discussion before, because I know Dan works with people that are paid and sees the taxes, returns and all that. I'm not going to pretend to be a payroll specialist. I'm not. I'm an economist turned math teacher. So my, my thought would be that we get a, a formal opinion from the town attorney on how the employees under VZ Park should be paid, including looking into, and I know, because you know probably what's in the document, but I bet a lot of people here don't know, that when the property was purchased, a management organization was created, right, to manage it. And I think that the attorney should look at that and make sure that we're just doing the things the right way. You know, because in today's society, you know, I'd rather be proactive on it and, and make sure that we're paying everybody the right way and doing everything properly and have them look, look at the VZ Park document and, and then tell us formally, this is how these employees get paid. And we'll do it, whatever they tell us.
Do you want to, Mike, you want to explain how, how that's being done?
All right, so now I'm speaking as a member of the Conservation Commission. Who has control-
You wear many hats.
VZ Park, yes.
These hats.
Nothing to do with community preservation. So we have used 1099 people to do, mostly to do our events management and also our facilities management. I believe that we are meeting the IRS requirements for using a independent contractor versus having a town employee do, do those jobs. In addition to that, both of those jobs have evolved over the years, particularly the event manager. The event manager position is complex. There's nobody else available in town that does that kind of job. And the position has been filled by probably 10 different people over the past 26 years. So in my discussions recently with Rebecca, I believe that Rebecca was going to check into the, some of the issues, I think, that probably Dan brought up with town council. So I don't really know where that stands, but I'm certainly happy to get their input on it, to make sure that we are doing the things the right way. I believe we've done it before, you know, because we've owned the place for 26 years and we didn't, we've always done things this way. So I know that we probably had to check it out before, but I don't recall the exact time when that was done.
I did reach out, I did reach out to town council. We had an initial conversation, but I would suggest that we get a formal opinion in writing.
Anybody else?
No.
Well, thank you, Mike.
Thanks.
Kathy, you had something?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Mike. Next, KP Law rate increase. As, right on our packet, KP Law has come up with a, I mean, hourly rate increase will be $230 and then other fees as they go on. After receiving a lot of, I asked Rebecca to put this as an agenda item. I'm just wondering whether it, it's time that we do an RFP to, to see what else is out there and get other, other law firms, see what they charge. If anybody, anybody has a, any comments on that? Go ahead, Kathy.
Yeah, actually, I, I had a conversation with John Christopher about this a little bit. I don't know who's aware of it, but he did work in, as a municipal attorney for the, for Peabody for years. And some towns have like an attorney like that and then they use a firm like KP when they have like a specialized problem. You know what I mean? Like a land or something like that, but they have like a general attorney. And I, I just didn't know if it was worth, rather than trying to go out for proposals, maybe have our town administrator do a little research of her own, see what other towns around us are doing for their setups, see what, what people like about it and don't like about it. Because I'm, I'm hesitant to just go out for a proposal and grab another law firm. You know what I mean? That you're just trading out the same thing. If we want to change, do we want an attorney that is more locally based and definitely municipal based, you know, with the kind of experience and knowledge that can be a little easier for us to access and maybe a little less costly for, you know, small questions? You know, general day-to-day. I think some towns have like a retainer and they can access for those kind of things. But I'm, again, not an expert on it at all. I think, I think a little research would be a good idea before we make any changes.
Comments? Dan?
I think we ought to see who's out there. I mean, you can hire one lawyer or you can hire a dozen. I mean, there's limitless. So most lawyers have some sort of area of expertise and they can't know it all. It's impossible.
We did recently retain Coppola and Coppola or something of that nature for assistance with the treasurer, tax collector on some tax title stuff. So we don't explicitly use KP.
Yeah, for tax title, usually, you know, they'll do it on kind of a per diem or so you can get a, you give them the, the whole lot, so they take the good, the bad and the ugly for our-
Take it off our hands.
For a widget. So, no, I think we should get, you know, if, I think, if we could ask Rebecca to do this, is what I'd like you to do is just break down what type of legal services we've used in the last couple of years. And there's a difference between human resources and employment law. If that's most of what we need, then I think we get a, an employment lawyer, somebody who specializes in that. And it could be a small firm or a larger firm. And maybe we can save some money. If we have litigation, then you can go in that direction or land use, those are specialized. But typically, the employment lawyers aren't litigating land use issues. I think the firm we have is kind of a, you know, the umbrella of municipal law, but, you know, is it overkill in some areas? And I don't know. But, you know, I've been on the board years past and we had everything from, you know, a snow shoveling case to a ZBA, you know, zoning matters and issues of permits and no permits and easements. So I don't know that we need a law firm that's one size fits all. I, I think we can find out what other firms doing. If, for the sake of argument, you know, 80% of what we need is employment related. This is get an employment lawyer.
Say that it's pretty across the board. I mean, the same as you just described. We go from land use to labor relations to procurement, to general bylaw review, town meeting. Bill Hewig does specifically town meeting oriented stuff. So there is a couple of buckets that we reach into in terms of our legal assistance. It's not just one specific area. We do have some litigation going on, so there, there is that type of legal representation as well. So it really has been across the board.
You know, to Chairman's point, I mean, if they're going to go up on the fees, I mean, I think we owe it to the taxpayers to see what others charge. I don't know. I don't know if it's off topic or on point, but, you know, my suggestion that we do the same with the CPA firms. I mean, every five years, we ought to review these things, you know? I mean, we get comfortable, maybe we get too comfortable. I'm not saying anyone does their job, they don't do their job. It's not the point. This is periodically, we should review our professional services, just like any other services and costs within the budget.
Anybody else? Jason?
Yeah, it'd be interesting to get some more information on what some of the other towns use KP Law for, firm for, because I know a lot of towns do use them because they encompass every aspect of the municipal laws that's needed. I'd definitely like to get a lot more information about what's out there and how some of the other towns are, are handling it.
Do we have a charge for Rebecca to look into that?
More, more work for Rebecca. I'm sure that's just what she's asking.
Ask questions?
Go ahead, Dan.
Isn't there some mass municipal, you can put out a question and see what other towns respond and get a friendly helping hand from somebody that gives you an idea on how to control costs? And, you know, certainly a town the size of ours isn't going to be, you know, on a par with a law and Sarah Brockton, you know, but-
There's a small town administrators list serve that I can query and see what I can find up for different municipalities in similar circumstances.
Thank you.
Okay. Nope, we can leave it at that. Next up, Board of Selectment Policies. Kathy, you wanted this?
Yes, I did. Well, Jason too.
Jason, you were working on this.
Put it on the screen so that they can see it on TV or not? Or will it not, will not show up well? This, just this then? Will it show or not? I stamped draft on it. You all have this, right? Okay. And you, did everyone get a copy of this too that I downloaded? We didn't write this. This is just off the selectmen's website. Risk management, insurance companies. Great, thank you. So we've met two times on this?
Three times.
Three times. I was going to say, it feels like three, but I can't, we started on it a while back, so. And so just by way of background, when Jason and I started on this, we, we looked at other towns' policies. The Groveland does have some policies on our website and at some point, we want to en- And at some point, we want to incorporate them into a single document. So there's not all these different policies like out there, like public speaking and open com, you know? And that we actually have a policy, I don't know if you're aware, that if you go to another board's meeting, you're supposed to write a report and bring it back to the board. I know, yeah. So some of these policies are maybe, were, came up at a time when the board wasn't working well together. So what Jason and I are trying to create is something that's straightforward, simple, not as long as some of the other things we've seen. Am I right so far?
Yes.
Yes, not as long, you know, so it's not so long that nobody ever looks at it. But to kind of touch on the, the aspects of our board, and this is not a complete document, but as you can see, it has a mission statement, which you're welcome to have input to. This says what we are, the chief executive board in the town. And as such, members of the board are expected to arrive at meetings prepared, having reviewed all meeting materials, to engage in civilized debate and discussion and to endeavor at all times to act in the best interests of the town. And then the purpose, this is more the purpose for why we felt the need to create the singular document. Recognizing the need to codify the traditional and accepted working relationships among members of the board, between the board and town administrator, and between the board and other town boards and committees and officials and citizens, as well as the need to consolidate town policies and procedures have undertaken to create operating procedures for the Board of Selectmen. Acceptance of the policies and procedures embodied herein shall supersede all previous policies and procedures accepted by past Boards of Selectmen. And the term MGLA shall refer to the Massachusetts General Laws as amended. Then we started into, um, the policies and procedures. And we gave the town administrators the responsibility for the maintenance of all policies and procedures and updating the manual with new and amended policies and ensuring that all the board's policies and procedures are distributed to newly elected board members. And copies of the policy manual will be available to the public and at the town administrator office, town clerk office, and posted on our website. And then we just, these, um, A, B, uh, C and D were the first, first steps we took at it. We looked at other, what other towns had and, um, I think we shortened it a lot. Jason, did you-
Well, yeah, like West Newburyport had 42 pages. That was their policy manual for the select board members. We, there was a total of six different towns that we pulled them from. And basically, the book that you're reading, the, uh, everything is in there. It's spread out and you come across it here and there. The goal was to conduct it down to something very small, simple, that we could hand to a new employee, a new, uh, member of the board, and they could look it over and be on the same page as everybody else. This was something that was also recommended by our town attorney, just because of the strife and the, uh-
Right.
Misunderstandings that the, the board was having at the time.
Right.
So this just helps clarify it, get everybody on the same page and makes everybody, uh, more accountable for their actions.
So, yeah, and so along those lines, what we did was we looked at what they had and then we said, okay, there's your conduct in the community. That's one aspect of how a board member interacts. And we had, came up with those A, B, C, D bullets that you'll realize your basic function is to carry out your mandated responsibilities, develop town policy related thereto, um, and with administration delegated to the town administrator. Realize that he or she is one of a team and you need to abide by board decisions once they are made. C, accept the office of the Boards of Selectmen as a means of unselfish service, not benefit personally or politically. I think, you know, that's ethics. And D, abide by the ethics established by the state. So that's a board member's conduct in the community. Then, conduct with administrative offices, officers of the town. Endeavor to establish sound, clearly defined policies that direct and support the administration for the benefit of the people, the community. Recognize and support the administrative chain of command and refuse to act on complaints as an individual outside the administration. Give the town administration administrator appropriate responsibility for discharging his or her disposition and solution. And D, have access to town legal counsel with the approval of the chair or town administrator. All other town official board members and employees may access town legal counsel with the approval of the town administrator. And then we had C, we just had again, four bullets for conduct with fellow board members. Recognize that action at official legal meeting is binding and he or she alone cannot find a board outside a meeting. Make decisions only after all the facts on question have been presented and discussed. Uphold the intent of the executive session and respect the privileged communication that exists in that session. Treat with respect the rights of all members of the board despite differences of opinion. And then we got to D, um, conduct aboard members at meetings. And this gets a little bit into the Roberts rules and also from other ones. There is a rule that's, don't speak more than once until everybody else has had a chance to speak. And there is a rule to not speak for more than five minutes without leave of the board. I think we all know the rule not to be interrupted by speaking, when you're speaking, unless it's a call to order for a correction of a mistake. Speak at board members' and meetings in a professional manner. Not make repetitious, slanderous or irrelevant remarks or engage in any kinds of disorderly conduct which disrupt, disturb or otherwise impedes the orderly conduct of the board meeting. Obviously, D, be subject to the ejection from the meeting at the discretion of the chair or a majority of the board for disrupting the meeting. E, cease debate on being called to order until the point of order is decided. That's a Roberts rules. And F, call any member to order by addressing the chair if the member who's speaking transgresses the rules of the board. And that's as far as we got it. And we were, just wanted to get your, your kind of reflection on where we're at now. Again, our goal is to not produce a 42-page document. You have the Selectmen Handbook. But we're gonna look through the other towns' rules a little more and see if there's a few more things. And then look at the policies that the board already has, like for public speaking, attending other meetings. There's a few. Rebecca gave us copies of those. And just try and put it all in one place and keep it simple.
Uh, comments? Dan?
Who's that with me? Well, I have a critical eye on-
All right, well, we'll-
I have a critical eye on a few things. Conduct in the community. I read that and I say to myself, is this similar to like a school policy that if you're like, get caught smoking a cigarette in the playground off campus, that somehow they can suspend you? So I don't want anyone controlling what I do outside of these meetings. So, conduct in the community.
Well, we don't control it.
Don't you mean conduct at the board meetings?
No, actually, conduct in the community just mattered, meaning that, you know, when you're out and about, these say nothing about, you could do whatever you want out in the community, just says, realize you're one of a team and decisions are made and, you know, abide by the ethics.
Dan, you wanna continue?
Yeah, I just, uh, you know. Accept the office of the Board of Selectmen as a means of unselfish service. Well, I think it is unselfish. I don't, it's a sacrifice.
It is. Agreed.
But if I like it, I suppose that could be selfish. Not benefit personally or politically. I thought it was a stepping stone to the White House, you know?
I don't think so.
Sorry, you know, couldn't resist. I just, I don't know, some of these things are illusory and ambiguous. So I could, we could, abide by state ethics. If not, you're gonna get, you know, in trouble. So, yeah, I agree with it in, in, in spirit.
Okay.
You know, um, like a nitpick phraseology, but I'm glad we don't have a 40-page document 'cause I'll tell you truthfully, I won't read it. I really don't care what they do in West Newburyport. I liked that. That was good.
Well, we knew you wouldn't read it.
West Newbury.
We, we went to the short of it.
Doesn't surprise me, you know, the intellectuals over there have a 40-page doc when we can, you know, do it in about four words. Why don't we all just be civil? And the words are Rodney King, why, why don't we all just get along? Or why can't we all just get along? So I think that's the spirit of what we need to do. And, uh, we need a little bit of structure so that, you know, five minutes doesn't become five hours. And, you know, if that's the spirit of it, I'm okay with it. But I don't like being censored. You know that, Kathy.
No, I, I know that, but I-
And twice a year, I might say.
Kathy, could you hold on?
No, bear with me, bear with me.
Let Dan speak.
I am.
Which is I, you know, I will question all politically, 'cause every now and then, maybe twice a year, like on, you know, Christmas and New Year's Eve, I might say, lefty liberal or something, everyone gets all worked up. Like, oh, you can't be political. Well, I, I think you and I disagree on that, Kathy, because a lot of what we do is, um, a lot of what I do, I'll speak for myself, is ideologically based. And what is your philosophy of government? What is the role of government? So I always question, what am I doing here? What do I want to accomplish? What am I accomplishing? Anything? You know, what is government for the people, by the people? I always think about those things, you know? And so a lot of what, you know, makes me me is politically based because it's rooted in American, you know, history and my life and my kid's life and everybody around me. It's, it's doesn't, what I do doesn't operate in a vacuum. So, you know, and I've heard it, you know? Not just on our board meeting, but I was listening to a school committee meeting and, and Dick Rogers said something and somebody, point of order, you know, he's being political. Well, who says we can't be political? A lot of what we do is political, how to spend money, what to spend it on. We're gonna do this, we're not gonna do that.
I do have to call a point of order on you, Dan.
You with me?
No, I have to call a point of order.
All right, so I want to clarify, Kathy, what do you want to accomplish on that?
What I would like to accomplish here, I think, when with Jason-
You hit a point of order?
Yes, my point of order, he's off the topic of what the policies are for. They're not about-
This is politically. I'm political.
Yeah.
Mark, you got anything?
No, I'm, I'm good.
It, uh, well, yeah, I, I do. I got a, I got a whole bunch here. I, I find it ironic, Kathy, that you're bringing this before the board. Because, uh, you interrupt about every speaker, whether it's a member of the board or, or somebody talking at the podium. And, uh, you, you, which, one of these here about only speaking once. And you, you want to silence everybody that doesn't agree with you. You want to shut them down. You're constantly, uh, calling for, uh, a, a point of order. And to, basically to shut people down and stop them from talking, but you want to be able to speak freely. As an example, when, when you've been told in the past that you're repeating yourself or you're rambling on, your response is, uh, no, I'm not, and you, and you just keep on going. You, uh, you know, you're bringing up this, uh, no member shall speak more than five minutes. No one should be allowed to speak, uh, only once in the subject where every other member chooses to speak. But, uh, that's a problem. And if, if you would abide by what's just on here, and as a perfect example, while we were discussing this and Dan was talking, you were interrupting him. And, uh, so I like this idea, but I'm not sure that it's gonna work because, uh, you're part of the problem. You need to, you need to respect people that disagree with you and, and I don't think that you do. You think that the rules apply to everybody except for you. And, uh, if you look at the last few meetings, which I did, I usually don't either, but I did. And you, you talk more on subjects than, than anybody else. And, uh, so I, I like the, I like the gist of this, but I'm not sure that it's gonna work. And, uh, because I'm not sure that you're gonna abide by your suggestions. But, um, did you have something else? Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, my intention here is to bring a sense of decorum and civility to here and you have utterly destroyed it in about four minutes. You have exactly shown the reason for these. Yes, sometimes maybe I talk a few more minutes than I should, but I don't ever shred somebody the way you just shredded me on TV in front of the whole town. And for that, Mr. Chairman, for that, I think that I have done a pretty good job here. And I've had enough of this for tonight.
Okay. We'll take it under advisement. Town administrator's time. Rebecca?
I just have two updates. One is to let you all know that the, um, there is going to be a culvert replacement project for a failing culvert over on Willow Road on Route 133 in Boxford. This will result in a traffic detour that will impact Groveland. The traffic will be directed towards Uptack Road. This detour will only be for westbound traffic and will be for passenger cars only due to the load requirement up on road, um, Uptack Road. The detail, door will be in place from June 6th until July 12th, but hopefully the work will be done a lot sooner.
June, June what?
June 6th to July 12th, so today. Until July 12th, but they're hoping the work will be done a lot sooner than that.
Okay, so local traffic only, obviously.
Yes. And then the other update is just, um, a request to see if anybody would be available for a meeting for the week of the June 13th or June 27th. We have transfers that we'll need to vote on prior to, uh, the fiscal year end. The finance board is going to be meeting to, uh, review those initial changes, um, shortly. And then once they make their recommendations, it historically goes to the Board of Selectmen, who then need to make their recommendations.
Anybody available? And, um, what was the week again?
Uh, either the week of the 13th or the week of the 27th.
Of July.
Of June. Need to be voted on prior to the fiscal year end. Yeah.
Dan?
Day of the week.
What day of the week?
On Monday.
I didn't know what would work best for everyone. I don't know if they're Wednesdays, Thursdays.
You said June 13th?
Just the week of the 13th.
Oh, 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 yeah, whatever. Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah, doesn't, uh, either, either week.
That's like in a week or so.
Yep, the, the week of the 13th is next week and then the week of the 27th is the final week before the end of the fiscal year.
No, I won't be around next week. Spike week.
So we could do, if that, if that's an issue, we could do the week of the 27th on Monday.
Just, I mean, I can, I can rearrange things. I just need to know which day.
You just think it wins game six of the season?
What's that?
I won't be here.
I don't care. Pick, pick one. And don't, don't forget that the week of the 20th, uh, Selectmen Meeting is on the 21st.
That is correct.
Is that timely enough, the week of the 27th?
The week of the 27th should be fine.
Okay.
It shouldn't take, shouldn't be a long meeting.
It shouldn't be a long meeting. It's gonna get reviewed by the, um, the finance board and we'll have a sheet done typically, as we've done in the past, that shows what items are being transferred and the monies and, um, which accounts are in need.
I don't care. Pick one.
Don't matter.
You have a preference?
Whatever's easiest for everybody else.
Tuesday at 6:30.
Tuesday the 28th?
Tuesday the 28th at 6:30?
Mark's for me.
Tuesday the 28th?
Yes. Right? Is that correct?
Oh, you said the 26th. Tuesday the 26th. What, Tuesday the 28th?
The 28th, yes.
6:30. Okay. Anything else?
No. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
It's in the calendar. It's in the calendar.
Yeah, mine too. Did you, uh, you just want to speak on the, um, on the, on the grant for the, uh, that, uh, for the cable TV?
Yep, um, I can just, as Chris mentioned earlier, we were awarded the fiber, municipal fiber grant from the Community Compact Program. As he was stating, this is gonna connect, uh, Town Hall to the police station as well as the library and essentially will help us with, um, enhancing our, uh, internet and communications and our HD, uh, channel once we get that working. And the chair was nice enough to attend the ceremony, um, up in Topsfield or Danvers?
Neither one.
Neither one.
No. Taunton.
Taunton, okay.
And I was able to have a nice discussion with the, um, with the mayor of Taunton, Sean O'Connell, and, uh- O'Connell, and, uh, the cable TV guy, uh, who was very, very knowledgeable and I'll, I'll give Chris and, uh, Jason, uh, his information if they need to contact him. He, he just blew my mind with, uh, with his knowledge. He, he was unbelievable. But he said he'd, he would, uh, he'd be receptive to phone calls, email, answer questions. Um, Selectmen's time. Uh, Jason, you have anything?
Um, yeah, I'd like to thank everybody that helped clean up the broken hydraulic line from Waste Management's truck in front of my house. So, yeah, they did a, a good job. It was quick and, uh, I learned a little bit watching, uh, them work and speaking with, uh, the, uh, Environmental Protective Services.
So it was more than five gallons?
Yes. Oh, Jesus.
Uh, Mark, you got anything?
No, I'm good.
Um, Dan?
Yeah, just a couple things. Um, this past weekend was, uh, graduation at the high school and, uh, and, uh, graduation in the class of 2022. Um, it was nice that they actually had a ceremony and outdoors and back to normal. Um, so, uh, that's good. And, uh, um, questions about upcoming things, um, you know, we're in June. I know we don't have fireworks here, but are there any plans or anything for, uh, you know? I noticed there were some porta-potties on the Elm Park there and I think that was a road race, so I don't, are we gonna have those for 4th of July? And what do we got planned for 4th of July, if anything? That's, that's more of a question than a, an answer.
I don't think we have anything that we know of.
Say we're gonna have fireworks? Does anyone know?
Usually do, yeah.
You know?
Uh, okay, I don't have anything either. Old or unfinished business, don't have anything. Uh, other items not reasonably anticipated at the time of posting. Uh, correspondence, uh, I don't think we got anything. And, um, yes, we do. Thank you. Uh, the Antique Appraisal Roadshow presented by the Groveland Historical Society on Thursday, June 23rd, 2022, 6 to 9 at the Washington Hall. Bring your treasures, meet, uh, Dan Meada, Antique Appraiser. Uh, five, five dollars per item, maximum of three. Uh, I don't think they held this last year. I, I went over a couple of years ago and I'll tell you, it was, it was pretty amazing. Uh, there was a lot of people brought things over and this, this guy was terrific.
Do you have another one of those flyers?
Yeah, you got one in your box in there.
I do.
My box?
Uh, out here.
My inbox?
I'll get it for you.
I'll get it myself. I can walk.
Uh, adjourn. The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Selectmen will be Tuesday, June 21st, 2022 at 6:30 as Monday, June 20th is a holiday. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn at 8:00.
41.
41.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? In unanimous. No four in favor, one absent.